Everyone please rise. Please believe in us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome everyone this afternoon. First order of business, approval of minutes for the hearing on 8:14 and regular meeting 8:50. Do I hear motion to approve? I'll get your standing up Mr. Dams.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or none.
Seventy-eight cents was our total claims. We break that down into our Fund One amount. We have $308,558.34. This is very much in line with this time last year. There is a difference of an increase of $15,000 over the same period as last year. There are a couple of things that are called to your attention. Workers' compensation, as we know, has skyrocketed. It's an additional $7,000 over what we paid last year. And then we have a $12,000 expenditure on a PA system for the Barstown Middle School. I will say that the PA system prior to this one served us very well. We had 24 years of service. Worked extremely well. It was time to upgrade there, so that was a $12,000 expenditure. In our debt service, Fund 400, we have a total of $38,547.43, and we paid that on three bond series this period. Any questions about any other individual claims? I've had a few questions from individual members, but do you have something you want to bring before the board for us to discuss? Thank you.
Okay, do I hear motion to approve the claim as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or none. Item number three, financial report.
I have three items to share with you. As you know, through the KRS 424.220, we are required to publish in the local largest print newspaper our financial documents. This is something that began just recently, and I want you to know that we have followed through with that. You may have seen that in the Kentucky Standard on August 27. We had our treasurer's statement, financial statement, bank certificate, and our vendor payment list. We ran a full page of advertisement in the standard. So we have completed that task for this year. Also wanted you to know, we are well underway with the audit. We have been working in schools. We have been here this week in the central office with Jason Strange. As you will recall, I shared with you that he is now with Stiles Carter and Associates, and he is conducting the audit for us. This year, be prepared, next month, typically this is a November event, but this AFR is due in Frankfurt, KDE, by November the 15th. Our meeting date is just slightly after November the 15th, so we're going to be able to bring this to you in October. Things are going very well in the audit. Look forward to seeing what Jason has to say, but I think we can expect good news as we have in past years. We'll share more with you next month. Also want you to know that the 2017 tax bills, they've been generated, and they will, scheduled to go out on September the 30th. We're going to talk to you a little bit later on the agenda. You'll see, work your way down on a program called CSI, Customer Solution Incorporated. We're going to be updating that program, and again, Mr. Dams will tell us more about that in just a little bit. So, those are the things that we have going on in treasurer's report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address those.
Okay, next item, item number four, superintendent's report.
Several things to share with you today. Very, very exciting report. First of all, a couple of housekeeping things. Do pay attention to your list of activities in your packet. One of those activities that are called to your attention would be tomorrow is High Attendance Day, right Mr. Hood? And we're doing some things across the district. In past years, we've had some people, some schools that have placed and have been recognized for high attendance, and so, of course, every day is High Attendance Day, but we're putting a special emphasis on this, this one particular day. And also, an item that's not in your packet, a call to your attention. You might have heard about this little discussion, something about pension going on in our state. So, tonight, we're going to give folks an opportunity to come and speak with our two legislators. Our pro temp, Jimmy Higgin, Senator Higgin, and also Representative Chad McCoy will be in our auditorium over at the Barstown High School. We have invited Dick Heaton, Mayor of Barstown, has helped organize this. We have invited all of the city government employees. We have invited the Nelson County government employees, the Nelson County school employees, and the Barstown City School employees. So this will be for CERS, which is mainly for us, is our classified employees, but all of those folks that I mentioned outside of certified staff are in that retirement system. So then KTRS are the certified folks, and so, folks will be able to ask questions. There's not really a lot of definite answers right now, but hopefully, folks will be able to have an opportunity to share their concerns, and Mr. Higgin and Mr. McCoy have been very kind to put themselves in this position to, to address those, those concerns. And so, there'll be more, we'll talk a little more about CERS in just a little bit.
What time did you say that was?
That meeting is at 7 o'clock. Thank you for asking. 7 o'clock in the auditorium. Well, moving on with our, oh, one other thing, our KSBA regional meeting. Reminder, that's on October the 24th. This year, it'll be in Elizabeth Town, but in a different location. It'll be at Back Home. I think you have that address. I can get that for you, the exact address on that, but as in the past, if you're interested in attending, getting those hours if you might need, let Elsie know, she'll get you signed up. We'll leave here at 4:50, and we'll draw straws and see who ends up driving that night, and we'll, we'll go over together if that's something you want to do. You all know that in our society today, it's an electronic society. If you don't have a smartphone, most everyone does, and that's the way most of our parents are communicating. They have that handheld device, and the truth of the matter is, that's how our students are communicating. So, we have one of our staff members, you may have seen an article recently in the Kentucky Standard about something called the Tiger Alert. And this teacher took it upon himself to create a program to take full advantage of this idea, that this is the way parents and students communicate mostly, is through the smartphone. He has developed a system where he can take information for his school, and, and other schools may be interested in even doing this, and send immediately, almost in real time, some good news about their student. Now, there is occasion when you can send where maybe that, that student could have a little better behavior for whatever the reason they might can improve in, but, but most of this, and I've actually seen some charts and some numbers, the vast majority of these contacts are about positive behavior. It's really, really a neat idea. So I've asked him to come today in superintendent's report, Mr. Matt Bartley. If you'll just come up to the podium there, be glad to have you, and he's going to talk to us about this program, Tiger Alert.
Thank you guys for having me in today and giving me the opportunity to talk. So, this actually started as a kind of personal project, and through the leadership team in the middle school, they've given me the opportunity to step it up to the next level and even actually get this implemented this year. It's not something that I thought would happen a year ago when I just started tinkering with the technology that we have available to us. We, right now, as a pilot year, we're calling it Tiger Alerts, and that's just kind of something we landed on through collaboration with the rest of the staff. Everybody kind of thought that was a good tone to it. So, it started with a problem. The leadership team, they came up with, I guess, last summer, a few different components of improvement for our school. One of them was communication, and we always emphasize communication in the middle school. We can never, you know, get, we can never be good enough with communication. We can always be better. But parent contact seemed to be something that we were kind of lacking in, and oftentimes, I think it's because, you know, teachers do a lot. We, we work hard, and there just doesn't seem like there's enough time in the day to get everything done. Well, even if you do make contact with parents every time you really need to, sometimes that contact is, like, it's late, you know? If it's too late, the reasons that we need to make contact, they might not be relevant anymore. If the student has a behavior problem in the morning, and I don't get around to calling until my planning period, which is at the end of the day, the student might have already beaten me back to the parent and said, "Hey, this teacher's picking on me. This is what they did." By the time I call the parent, there's miscommunication, there's misinterpretation. So there's a lot more work to be done if we don't make that communication right then and there. You can't just stop and take five or 10 minutes out of destruction either. So my challenge was to speed up the parent communication process and try to make it instant, which I think I have succeeded in doing, using technology that's free. We're already getting it as a district. So, using technology that's free, using smartphones, which, as Mr. Holzkla already said, everybody has, pretty much. Most teachers have them, a lot of parents have them, most of the kids have them. So I thought, well, what if there was a way we can communicate with parents? They could just get this communication right on their smartphone, which they have in their pocket, and they can see what I needed to tell them right then and there. So, we use a, a suite of technology called Google Apps for Education, and just kind of connected different pieces to it. I had to learn a little bit of computer programming, not a lot, still not an expert on that, and then a lot of collaboration amongst different teachers. We'll say, Mr. Mike Paul, the pirate at the back, he's been a great help. Mr. Jeremy Schultz, and a lot of the other teachers just, you know, giving me, well, what ifs, you know? Here's a problem, I foresee that, let's try to work through it. So a lot of collaboration eventually has led to this right here. So this is kind of the, the bread and butter of our school right now, and I think for the first year that we've adopted this, we've done a really good job. So here's an example of a badge, a student ID, that a student would wear on a lanyard around their neck on a daily basis at Barstown. If for some reason, the student did something that I thought was worth sharing with his parent, parents, dad, principal even, then all I would have to do is, with the free program I have on my phone, a QR scanner, and obviously, it's not this big, we don't make the kids wear a big sign on it, they're to scan. So, I just scan the QR code, and then it opens an app, and I'll, can I come up?
Yeah.
All right, so it basically, it prefills the name of the student in, Graham Clark, onto a Google form, which I'm sure you guys have at some point filled out a Google form before. So I don't have to type anything in. I would select that Graham was acknowledged for outstanding achievement. I'm sure he did something good today that's worth noting. And then I would hit submit, and his folks will get, if they're signed up for this, they could either get a text message, an email, or both. And it happens pretty quickly, it just kind of depends on your service.
Daddy, just get it. There it went. There you go.
Dr. Clark, would you mind reading what that says?
It says, Graham Clark was just recognized by Mr. Bartley for outstanding achievement.
So I'm able to communicate that Graham did something, you know, awesome that I need to, like his dad, though. I can even go in and add custom comments to it. And then on the flip side of the coin, if Graham was having a hard time today, and there was some behavior incident that I needed to communicate, and I didn't want him to beat me to the punch, then I could have submitted it for a number of negative behaviors as well. But the point is that, I mean, he got it that fast, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get parents involved, and we want them to constantly be involved. Not just at the end of the day, not just when we need them to discipline their kids. We want them to be constantly knowing how their kids doing at school. And so far, so good. We've had almost 2,000 positive messages that have been communicated to parents compared to only 435 behaviors of concern, and so that's more than a four to one ratio of positive to negative communications, which is something that Dr. Clark has always harped about at school. I mean, he can't say that enough. Getting parents on our side by telling them how great their kids are is, I mean, you would, you probably wouldn't be surprised of how powerful that would be, but that's to say the least. And the parents appreciate this feedback too. I mean, they, they let us know, hey, thank you for telling us this about our kids. And they can actually reply to these messages as well, starting a two-way dialogue between students, or between teachers and parents. You know, an increased parent contact could also play a role in reducing office referrals and other behavior. We had a, a data team come in and do some processing. These are the differences between our write-ups last year, our official office referrals. Last year, we were at 95, this year, we're at 63. I'm only speculating, obviously, I can't say that the Tiger Alerts is what has caused this decrease, but I'm interested in following this data across the year and seeing if maybe there is a difference because parents are being notified more timely. But I just wanted you guys to see those, those number differences there. And I think that is the end of my presentation. I wanted to open the floor, if you guys have any questions about this, I'll try my best to, to answer them.
Does this come directly through you, or the teachers? Do the teachers have the capacity to do this on a real-time basis in class?
They do, yes.
They do, okay. Well, my son, I see once or twice a week, of course, when it comes up Tiger Alert on my phone, I'm thinking, what do you do now? It's always been pretty positive. But yes, I get that regularly, which, that's, sometimes we're from specific teachers. It is a pretty neat thing, and it's sometimes at 2:00 in the afternoon, it might be 11:30 that morning.
Yeah, so if the student's wearing their badge, then it's as simple as, can you please show me your badge, and then you can scan.
Yes.
And we kind of thought about, well, what if the student forgets or loses?
Well, I tend to, I tend to support him after school. You know, the teacher said, you did some good, great thing.
That's the idea.
Yeah. But it works.
Thank you.
Matthew, is this something that other schools in the district are using that you know of?
Currently, we are the pilot and the only school to be using it. I know there's been interest from the primary school to set up a similar communication system, kind of to use within school. So I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, sooner or later, hopefully sooner, some of the other schools are adopting similar technology.
I mean, is this, this is your program, your design, do you have it protected patent law?
Well...
Whatever you need to.
I don't, and I've kind of looked into it.
It works for us.
Yes, I don't yet. That's another big initiative in the middle school, is that yet. So, I've kind of looked into it, and I'm not real familiar with patent law. I know that this is not the only program that purportedly communicates real time with behavior. There's, there are others, but as far as I know, it's the only one that uses Google technology. And one of the other benefits of Google technology is, we, as far as confidentiality goes, all of the information is kept on our servers, and is completely secure of anybody, you know, tampering with, with that information. Whereas going through a third party, there might be some security issues there.
Very good.
No, go ahead.
Back when I was in school, we didn't have all this technology. I'm talking back in the 50s and 60s, but for some reason, when I misbehaved and something happened, it got home. It got home before I did. And I had my behavior adjustment.
Well, I just think it's wonderful.
I mean, I'm blown away, and I can, I'm kind of imagining that the cost was pretty low.
It's free.
Well, the lanyards, right?
Well, yes, so...
And then that, that's it, right?
Besides the, you know, the, the medium to get it out there, but the technology itself, the software is completely free.
That's awesome.
It's, it's, we already had it, so use it in a different way.
Yeah.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you, we're very proud of you, and I'd like to talk a little bit more about you. I'd like for the pirate in the back of the room to come to the board a few times. Kenny, Justin, you all go to a lot of board members, I bet you've never seen a pirate.
Never seen a pirate.
So he's going to be talking like a pirate the rest of the afternoon.
Oh, I would love to, but my throat is already telling me that, that's got to stop for now.
Mike Paul, he's our, he's our biggest technology coordinator, works with our teachers. He'll be called, and they have a special program today, just, he can tell us about that, or Dr. Clark can. But I wanted him to come and tell, tell us a little bit more about Matthew. Matthew has stepped up and completed the Google Innovator Program, and I just wanted, that's very significant, and I really can't do justice, so I asked Mike to come and share with us the significance of his recent conduct.
So, I'm lucky enough to be a Google Certified Innovator as well, and a lot of folks that I know are, and it's a pretty awesome feeling to be able to do that, but just to refresh your memories a little bit about what Google Certified, Google Certified Innovators are. Candidates are selected based on their professional experience, their passion for teaching and learning, their innovative use of technology, of course, is a big factor, in school settings, and their potential impact on other educators. They're ambassadors for change, who empower other educators and students through innovation culture within their own classrooms, schools, and organizations. Now, right now, worldwide, there's only about 1,200 Google Certified Innovators in the entire world, and they do these Innovator Academies four times a year, and they are hosted in various places. There were this past year, they've had in Washington DC, in Sydney, Australia, the next one is in Stockholm, Sweden, and then the final one for the year will be in Brazil. So they're all over the world. It's a selective process. You do have to apply for it, and there are a number of hoops you have to jump through to just be able to even meet qualifications to apply for it before you can submit your application. Right now, there are, I think, 12 or 13, I don't remember the exact number, of innovators in the state of Kentucky. There's only one other district that has two innovators in the district, and that's eminent independent schools, but we are the only district in the state of Kentucky that has two innovators in the same building, which, that's pretty awesome to be able to do that. To be able to apply for an innovator, you have to become what they call Google Certified Educator Level 1 and Level 2, which is a series of training modules that you go through, and then a test, and then some performance-based activities to demonstrate that you know how to use this technology. You have to do Level 1 and Level 2, and then you have to come up with an innovation project, and of course, we all know what Mr. Bartley's innovation project probably was. Then you have to create a one-minute pitch video to tell your idea and show that to the Google folks and those that look at the application, and then you have to fill out the application. Some people have tried this several times. A good friend of mine, she tried three times before she was able to become a Google Certified Innovator. I know other people have tried five and six times. They've sent in applications, and tweaked their ideas, and submitted, submitted over and over again. Mr. Bartley got his Level 1, Level 2 certifications done in one weekend, because he doesn't sleep, I guess, and then within a few days, had his video and application and all the other stuff ready to go. Of course, now his project was months and months and months of hard work getting that ready, but to compile all the data, he was ready in less than a week, and submitted. And actually, there's normally a week in between when the submission date closes and when they announce things. I know I was a hot mess for a week waiting for them to announce mine. He submitted, and a couple days later, he sends me a message, hey, guess what? And he sends me the picture of the email, the notification that he's been accepted as an innovator. So, on his first try, all within probably about a two-week span, from not being ready to being ready, and now we have two innovators in Barstown City Schools, which is, which is pretty amazing. And he's been able to present this idea already to other educators from across the state. We had our annual EdCamp Kentucky Professional Development Conference this year at Barstown Middle School. The end of August, and we have people from the western part of the state, eastern part of the state, north, south, and even, I think, a couple from Indiana and Tennessee. And he was able to share that with them, and I know several other people are very hooked on the idea and want to implement it, or implement at least some version of it. So it's very cool to see that happen and see a teacher just grab hold of technology that we already had available, and just figure out how we can use it to do awesome things for our kids, and that's really what it's all about. And Mr. Bartley's been fantastic with it so far.
Congratulations.
And a former student.
That's even better.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for what you've accomplished. Both of you, actually, appreciate you being here today.
Mr. Bartley, don't get famous and leave us.
No plans.
Good, good. The next, next presentation we have, I've asked Mr. Dams to come. Ms. Sharp is at a training today, was unable to be here, but our middle school principal, Michelle Sharp, Early Childhood Education, she applied for a grant and received that grant. This is our second year in the grant. I think we've shared this with you before, but these are the fruits of her labor on the grant. We are, we are starting our second STEAM program within the last 12 months, and this one will be aimed at four-year-old children in the early childhood program who do not have scheduled after-school daycare. So, these children, we have 38 presently, and there's 20 in the morning, 18 in the afternoon. The 20 in the morning, they finish their early childhood at the facility there on the early childhood campus, then they come over to our, to our, almost said Little Steamers, excuse me, our STEAM Academy. And, and then they're here in the afternoon, but in the morning, a different set of students, the 18 are here, and then they go over to early childhood in the afternoon. So this is really an innovative program. We're very excited about the kind of things that we're going to be able to, it, it's kind of like planting a small tree and then reaping the great benefits years later. I think this would be an excellent example of what we're going to see in this program. We really don't know how much it's going to impact, but it's, it's going to have a huge impact when these students are in the high school. Mr. Dams, share with us about STEAM.
Yeah, this is very exciting, and of course, Matthew just said, but he, he was a product of ours, and so now we're going to start them being murdier. Can you imagine what they may be when they get to be Matthew's age in the future? So we're very, very excited about this. A little bit more about the program. Of course, STEAM, you know, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math is what STEAM stands for. And of course, around here, we call them the Little Steamers, because they are. But part of the process was also, these, these students, in order to qualify for this, are in state-funded program in early childhood. They, kids that had two years with us had priority, if they'd been with us as a three-year-old and a four-year-old. Last spring, we sent out information to families to see if they might be interested. We got some interest back. We had a organizational and informational meeting with those parents, and then they, they signed up, and also, they were, they signed a little bit of a contract with us. Also, they would guarantee good attendance, they would guarantee commitment to the program, and a continued education also for the parents. So we've got it on both sides, so they've made that commitment. These are kids that are not going to a certified daycare in the afternoons, and so this is going to fill that gap. Now, part of the grant also provided for a outreach teacher. So we have one of our veterans, Jennifer Hagan, one of our veteran early childhood teachers, is going to spend this entire year reaching out to three daycare programs. One of them is our daycare program, and then Discovery and Little Angels are the other two. Now what she's doing is she's reaching out and going to those daycares, teaching the staff how to become better teachers along the way. Now, we thought we'd get a little bit pushed back from this, but so far, they have just been soaking it up. The teachers in those facilities can't get enough of Ms. Hagan and what she's presenting to them, so that's been a really, a big positive for us. Also, we have a teacher, Dana Timble, is our teacher in the STEAM Academy at the fieldhouse, and she has Suzanne Spalding as her assistant. So those three form that team. We just got started, and we, we didn't think we were going to get the grant notification till the end of August, but we got it at the beginning of August, so we started really scrambling. We had to buy materials and everything to get ready, their technology had to be ready, and so they started on the day after Labor Day. So we've been into it a full month, and it's been just super exciting to watch this happen. But we're going to show just a little short video of some things that they've been doing over there, but just kind of watch and see what they do as they're going right here. Come on. So, so that's what we're dealing with right there. You know, we have our architects here today, the plumbing wing in here, future engineers, those kind of things, and this is happening at four-years of age. And of course, we have our other STEAM program that starts in third grade and goes through to the eighth grade, and we have all our advanced placement stuff in the high school, and then we have our outreach for kindergarten through second grade. So, we're steamed up all the way through now from fourth grade on, but we're very excited about this. Ms. Sharp and her team did an outstanding job putting this together. We'll, we'll compete for the grant again next year, and hopefully, this will be an ongoing thing. Any questions about that?
Well, it would be nice if grandfathering the kids that go to our daycare right into the preschool.
Right, right.
I think that needs to happen.
That's something we...
All of them.
We'll have to build a pretty big building, put them all in there, but we, maybe that can be done.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Downs, thank you, and that concludes our superintendent report today.
Okay, next item is, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the Board of Education, please, go to the podium with your name and your topic. Okay, being known, we will move right along. Item six, presentation of architects.
In the, the gym board meeting, you know, I spoke with you, actually, last spring, where we began talking about new facilities, building new facilities here on our campus and our new property out on Templin, and we were talking about the process, and in those conversations, we decided that we would begin to look at some things that would put us in an excellent position when the time came for us to turn a shovel in the ground, begin construction process. We'd have a lot of these basic things behind us. So, in June, we asked Joe Nance to come and speak with us with Ross Sinclair Associates, and he spoke to us about the bonding process, how we get the bonding money, how the bonding money can be spent, how to get things ready for a new project. So, keeping with that theme today, we're very fortunate to have with us Mr. Ken Stanfield and also Justin Michael Fresh with our architect, Sherman Carter Barnhart, and they're going to share with us the, the design process, the, the building process, so when the time comes, we'll be much better prepared for, for that entire process. So we have today Kenny over here, Justin over here. Welcome, gentlemen. We're certainly glad to have you, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you for having us. You know, this is something that I think a lot of districts just take for granted, but I think it is very valuable that Mr. Holzclaw asked us to come today and just give you kind of, kind of a brief or precursor here about the design process and what you could expect moving through that process. What we've got here is just kind of the first process, the first steps. Obviously, the, I'm sorry, the first issue is typically having a district facility plan, and the Department of Education requires you to update that on a regular basis, typically every four years, or you have to ask for a waiver. So, the first part of establishing a project is actually to establish, to pick one of those projects from that district facility plan, and then select an architect, select the site, which, as most of you know, we've been dealing with an existing site here and have kind of developed a master plan over the years for the RECC property. And we currently are finishing up the project there on the bus garage, but we've just got a number of opportunities on that project, on that property for the next 30 to 50 years, if you will.
This isn't to say this is the only way to develop the property, but it gives you a good idea of what can go, what, you know, what space is available, you know, how big an athletic complex might be, you know, how big a, a building would be. You can see, you've got space for a new facility on the front, new facility on the back. It may be that these go up closer together and all the athletics are in the back, but at least this shows you how the site could be utilized.
The, the other ones that we listed here are establishing funding sources and establishing a program or budget, and then finally submitting a BG1. We all know that KDE is going to be involved in the process. The BG1 document is really the document that establishes a project with the Department of Education, and it outlines both what your budget is and what funds you have available to pay for the project. And then typically, right after we get a BG1 approved by the Board of Education, we like to schedule a sit-down review with the Department of Education to be sure we begin the project with everyone on the same page. One of the initial steps that we always do in a project is establish a schedule so that everybody kind of has a schedule in mind, and we can all kind of work from that. We like to outline each step with that, and that involves meetings with not only you guys as the Board of Education, but also with staff and with the end-users, so that we can assure that we've got the proper design with them in mind. And then finally, as always, once we get your all's approval, then it's always followed up with the subsequent KDE reviews and approval. There are five major phases of a project, and you see those listed on the left, schematic design, design development, construction documents, bidding, and then finally, construction. We typically get a lot of concern from board members because they feel like, you know, am I going to have another chance? If I'm approving this tonight, you know, is, are you guys just running with it? At each one of these, and you'll see in the subsequent slides, we'll be asking for approval from you, and it basically is just your approval at that point in the process. You always have an approval, a subsequent approval at each point in the process to be sure that we're following the, the appropriate steps and the appropriate path for your district. So schematic design, as we mentioned, one of the first parts of the puzzle, if you will, pieces of the puzzle, is establishing the site and looking at how that site might be master-planned, or how it might be developed over time. That might be, that might involve whether or not we need to accommodate for future additions, or if the same property will be used for multiple facilities. And that kind of, the RECC property is a perfect example of that. It may or may not be developed exactly like that, but it kind of gives you a roadmap or identifies the potential of that site for future uses. The other part of the schematic design is the building. We, we talked with Mr. Hood and Mr. Holzclaw about, one of the very first things with the schematic design is dealing with the KD model program. If you were to say today that we wanted to build an elementary school, then KD would be very interested in what the capacity, the student capacity of that elementary school would be, and then they actually have a model program that they would assign to that facility. So if it's 600 students, for example, they know what all, what spaces are to be included in a 600-student elementary school.
They know how many basic classrooms, and they want to, and they'll tell you how big the gym is going to be. So, we get the flexibility in moving those spaces around, but they're pretty strict about how big the facility is and making sure that all of the spaces that are required in that model program are identified.
One of the things that, that we feel with our experiences, we've been used to dealing with that model program, and we know how that we can kind of play the system and get the things accomplished that you want to do as a district, but work within the framework that KD establishes, so. The other part of schematic design is what's this facility going to look like? And part of the things that we do at that point would be to develop some exterior concepts, both more hand-drawn look or photorealistic looks, so that you guys understand from the inception of the project what this thing might look like. Then if we just look at the, the kind of nuts and bolts of this, always, as I mentioned earlier, we would look for a board approval, for you guys to formally acknowledge that, that we have done what you guys think we're doing. And that would include a site plan, floor plans, building elevations, and then a budget with, again, the BG1 established with the budget for the project and the funds allocated for the project, and then submit that to the Department of Education for their review. The next pro, the next point in the process is, is the design development, and again, it's just incorporating the schematic comments, anything that we've heard from both you or your staff or administration. We want to be sure that we incorporate those, and we begin to develop each point or each room within the plans. For instance, media centers, kitchen cafeteria, the actual classrooms. We would look for, to get input so that we have exactly the classroom in mind for your district tailored to your specific needs.
And schematic design in the administration suite might have just been a rectangle on the plan, and now, in design development, that's where we go back to your staff and work out how many offices there are, how the reception area works, so it's a more detailed analysis of those pieces.
Nuts and bolts type things, again, it's a detailed breakdown. We start to look at material availability, but again, we begin to look at the budget with exactly what you all want within your building. And we would submit two items for KDE approval, and first, your board approval, then KDE approval at that time, and that would be the BG2, which is an outline specification, basically, and a preliminary BG3, which is a cost opinion that basically matches what you guys said you want with the funds that are available again. And then we'll go back to KDE again with, for another, another approval. The bulk of our work is actually in construction documents. This represents about 40% of our work on a typical project. This is when we really complete the plans, the specifications, and have final reviews with your staffs to incorporate all of those comments and, and all the details into a bidding document set that we can give to contractors and get pricing information back on. And then, final budget, bidding alternates. We do have some flexibility, and that's something that a lot of Boards of Education like to take advantage of. We can build in alternates so that if you guys say, well, this is the base, this is the minimum we want to do, but if we had some extra money, if bids came in lower, we would like to do, you know, two more classrooms or something else, we can give you that flexibility so that you can identify exactly what those costs are on bid day and make informed decisions based on real numbers. So that is something that we, we have done a lot. But finally, everything kind of ends there with a final board review and approval and authorization to bid the project. Once we get authorization to bid a project, it will go back to KDE for their approval of the bid documents. We then are required to, to issue a formal advertisement to bid, typically, that's a local newspaper, and then we'll send the project out to bid. A typical project, a new construction elementary school will typically bid for a minimum of three weeks, and then we will collect all the bids back, we'll receive those bids, we'll evaluate both of the actual construction costs and their formal proposal, which is an actual bid document they're required to submit on that day. And we will actually look at, you know, how, how it aligns with the funds that you have available and make sure there aren't any discrepancies between any of the bidders, make sure they have everything included, that type of thing.
One of the things that has rapidly changed at KDE is, as you might suspect, everything is going electronic format, and so, not only the bid documents we prepare, but all of the forms now are submitted electronically. That, it's better now that they've kind of gotten through that, because it was in a system called SharePoint, now they've shifted to a system called FactPac, and it takes a little bit of time to, you know, work the ins and outs of it, but they've got, they've got the bugs worked out of it pretty well right now, so. But even in terms of the bidding documents, a lot of times now, contractors won't even order a paper set of plans. It would just be given to them electronically. And so that's one of the big things that sort of changed recently.
That's basically the, the project, or the, the process, if you will, kind of walking through those. If you have specific questions, or if we can answer any questions that you have.
Couple things for clarification for the second board. BG1 begins the project.
Yes.
What ends the project?
BG4 and BG5. They actually have two close-out documents that are now required. And so basically, we would go through construction. Once we receive, receive all the warranty information, all of the close-out documentation from the contractor, then we would present to you a final payment application and the BG4 and BG5 documents to officially close out a project.
So once the board's ready for the BG1 to begin, and that gets, you get that process just like you told us about, and then that gets sent in, what's the average amount of time before a project can be started? We bid...
From the, from the time that you all would identify BG1 and us be ready to bid the project, you're probably looking at a six-to-eight-month timeframe. That's, that's average, you know, for, for the size of facility, you know, than I think we'd be talking about.
So, once we're looking at, with our facility plan that you mentioned at the beginning, with the work, we have that in good order, things are underway. We have, working with the department, and maybe you all even joined us at our last meeting with them, I think there were some conversation that maybe they wanted to... Initially, we looked at a second and third-grade facility. They're, they're asking us to consider the possibility of a middle school facility. So that might be something that we would be looking at. My question to you, if we did that, one of our, our thoughts have always been in this, in this plan that we have here, is we want to be flexible with whatever we build. We want to be able to put, if it was a second, third grade, and we wanted that to be a middle school in five years, we wouldn't be locked in because of the design factors. Perhaps to put it in something you would understand, the pod concept that we have in the middle school limits us on what we can do with the current middle school, so we want to stay away from those kind of things. My question to you is, would we be able to build either second, third, or middle, and then later convert that, say, even to a high school? Is that a possibility? And before I turn this over to you, we have a lot of experience in roofs, way too much. And so, there are, you know, there are joining places where the roof comes in, and it's always a leaky issue. And so, share with us, and you have shared with me in the past, some ways that you avoid those kind of things as well, if, if that is a possibility.
Well, I think absolutely it's a possibility. The key is knowing that is a possibility going in, because we would look at designing the facility with that in mind. Not only just future expansion, but possibly changing, you know, the grade levels and that sort of thing. So you would, you would look at it kind of both ways, from both a program, program standpoint, because there are, there are specialization classrooms in a middle school that you don't have in an elementary. So where you locate those might be very important as a future addition if it, if it were to be, say, a high school or even a primary center. So, those kind of things we would take into consideration. And then the whole idea of the roof, you know, the, the way to think about a school building is, the roof never tends to leak out in the middle, you know? It's always where human hands are touching it and creating the flashings, and it's all where you tie things together. So the simpler you make the building, the simpler the roof can be. And so, you know, roof, roofs are problematic, so the key to that is just make them as simple as possible. And not only for the building you're building, but think about how you're going to add on to it in the future and how those tie-ins would be made, so that you wouldn't create complex issues that are going to be a problem down the road.
The diagram you showed us, you said that KDA's got their idea of how things should be presented. Well, that, your, the slide you had, it looked like you had pods. Instead of having, like our primary school, you've got quarters. And, but it looked like you had pods. You had some classrooms here, 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 around the gymnasium, and seemed like for what we, what we would prefer would be something, you had, built around the gymnasium, have a quarter here, 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 and be able to add on other quarters as time is, is required.
This was just one example of how it's been done? I'm not saying that, that was for you guys. I'm just saying, this is, this is one way we, we have done it, one way we would present it, but to me, it's, it's totally unique to Barstown City Schools, so whatever we come up with together, we'll... So whatever we come up with together would reflect exactly what you're talking about. We may go completely away from a pod arrangement and then look at something completely different. The other thing that has sort of changed, and we've been kind of on the forefront of that, is, is the energy efficient design. And there's a lot of, a lot of things that you plan for and do that can aid that because nobody's finding any free pots of money these days. You know, we understand that. And so, but what we can do is, is we know that, you know, your general fund not only pays your teacher salaries, but your, you know, electric bills too. So if we can have a dramatic impact on that portion of it, you can put that money back in the classroom. So we definitely want to, when we look at a new facility, we want to talk about those kind of things and make that part of the design decisions that are, that are made so that when that building opens, you know, it's going to be one of the most energy efficient schools in the country.
Thank you for mentioning that. I do have one final question for me. Six to eight months after BG1 is began, then you get approval, you can bid it and begin the process. Generally speaking, on an average, for a 650 student middle school, what kind of timeframe are you looking at in today's market to get that completed?
I think typically for that type of facility, you're looking at about 15 month construction window. Now, if you, when you shorten that window, it can be done, but sometimes you might pay a premium for that shortened construction window. You may look at a slightly lengthened construction schedule to maybe a maximum of, I would guess, 18 months. But 15 months is typically about average what we would see.
That's average bidding process?
Correct.
Six to eight for design?
Six to eight for design and then 15 to 16, I'd say, is a good number, like Justin said, for construction. And you can, you can shorten that. And, you know, we can, we can shorten the design time some too.
That's what I was going to go next. If it takes you twice as, half as long to design and twice as long to build it, you know, a whole lot of ink on this paper.
That's true. You know, that, and that's a good point. We were renovating a school not too long ago and it, it was in Frankfurt and it was, it was one of the oldest buildings. And the set of old construction documents was five sheets. Now, a typical school like we're talking about is 200 plus. So there's a, there's a lot more ink on paper.
And typically, when we talk about six month design schedule, that also includes KDE's design review. So for schematic design, design development, and construction documents, they allow themselves two weeks for each one of those reviews. So there's a month out of the schedule right there.
So we were, we were incorporating that, realizing that we would have to have that.
Well, have you done many projects where maybe a bidding school or elementary school became a high school later on?
We actually have. Actually have. And, and done schools where started out as a middle school and then added the high and vice versa. You know, Edmondson County was a high school and then we added the whole middle school component, so it became a 712 facility.
So you kind of built that around it or?
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here today and appreciate this wonderful presentation.
Thank you. I'm glad Justin wanted to come and red beer, but I'm so glad it didn't let him.
Pirates are welcome here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was afraid I asked. I still let that go.
Okay, next item, approval fiscal year 2018 working budget.
All right. Item seven, it's our working budget. And you know that there's a lot of time, excuse me, a lot of work that goes into preparing this budget. We began in January with the draft budget. In May, we take a look at the contingency budget. And then this time of year in September, we finalize it with what we call the working budget. Now, this is supposed to be the budget. This is the 1718 budget. And, and it is for all practical purposes. Each year, this is a difficult process. But this year's been especially difficult and especially frustrating with as many unseen events that have taken place on the revenue side. And I guess they can be looked at on the expense side as well. There's just been so many changes. It's, it's a good thing that we do put this much work into the budget so we can be so aware of, of the kind of things that we're having to deal with. Just two weeks ago, we received information on the CERS, the County Employment Retirement System. I told you about the meeting for tonight, how expensive that could be for us. If that possibly could be an increase, I'll talk more about this in a moment, but possibly could be a 50% increase. We paid $800,000 plus last year. This, this year, we'll pay 1.2 million. That may or may not happen in this current year. Maybe, we may be looking at it the next year, but it's a possibility to be happening this year. Very frustrating. And then, last, the Friday before last, we're notified by the governor of a $200 million shortfall of projected income. We're only three months in to the new year, but the projection doesn't look good. And so, to prepare, he's asked the school system to cut 17 plus percent from the overall education budget, which is $69.5 million. Doing some rough, quick math, it comes to about $262,000 for us. Now, if you understand now what I mean about the frustrating piece, we build a budget and last week we get notified of potential in mid-year cuts. And you know we've had multiple SEEK adjustments at mid-year. We've had transportation cuts at mid-year. It's normal to see some of those things, but this year's even been, been more frustrating. So with that being said, let's, let's dive into this budget. You heard some of this information in the past. Again, as I said, this is the third time that we reviewed this. We will be asking you to approve this, this final budget today though. So, the budget totals, $33,490,368. We always tell you that the majority of our expense comes in the general fund. We are a people business, like other school systems, approximately 80, 85% of our expense is salary. In our Fund I is $26,941,497. Here are some things on the revenue side, then we'll talk about the expense side, just to give you some organization of the conversation. Revenue side, we'll be beginning with approximately, a beginning balance of about $3 million. That's subject to change with the AFR, which will be sent in in October because of the November 15 approval that we talked about earlier. This, this budget includes the latest projections for SEEK. We think we know what they will be. There are no substantial changes to our programming, the number of teachers that we have, the kind of programs that we offer. We're, we're able to maintain all of those at this point. There likely will be some sort of adjustment for SEEK at the end of this month. Typically around September the 30th, they notify us of this. As I mentioned to you earlier, there are times that it's mid-year and January or February that adjustments are made. That SEEK number is looking at $9,214,754. Then, as you know, we approved a 4% increase of revenue this year with, when we set the tax rate. That will generate $8,084,734. So, I just make one comment about the decision you made about the 4% of increased revenue. Folks are sometimes critical of us for making this decision, but based on what I just told you, it's a good thing you made that decision. It's a really good thing you made that decision. We'd be in a, be in a very tight spot. Moving on down, our capital outlay and our unused bonding funds, account 310 and 320. In the past, we have been able to get permission to roll that over into general fund type expenditures. This year, we're keeping that steady. It looks like we're going to be using those numbers for projects that we have. Part of it will be a softball project. We're finishing up some work at our athletic complex at the Temple property, be some other things. We have a tennis court renovation that we're looking at that's going to be necessary due to some, some cracks that have developed. And I think I sent that to you in, in your, in your packet, that if those cracks are not dealt with, they'd be okay this year, might be okay next year, but then we're looking at a $90,000 expenditure, which might be a $17,000 today. So those are some things we're going to be looking at using that capital outlay and the unused bonding funds for. So, flip over to the expenditure side. You'll see in this budget, the debt service has been accounted for. We purchased some, had a bus purchase this year, so we have made arrangements through the KIST obligation. So that would be one of our major expenses there. It also includes a 2% increase for salary for staff. As you know, we discussed this in April, we made this decision in June, and of course, we get the kind of news I shared with you last week. So it's just one of those things and it's, it's difficult, frustrating. We'll talk a little more about that. Also, things to keep in mind, expenses, we do have a 45% increase of workers' compensation. There's almost a 50% of liability and property insurance increase this year. And I'm sure when this, these storms finish, there, there, all of our insurance rates will probably continue to, to go sky high. That's what we know at the current time. It does leave us with a contingency figure. This is kind of an odd piece here, but each year I try to share this with you. Contingency is capped on the, on the expense side because it does go in, it's 6.9% is about where we are on, on our contingency. The state requires a 2.5, so we're, we're pretty much in that range and it's a good thing that we do have that 6.9 under the circumstances that we have. So, one other point to make to you that, in our Fund 51, that's our food service. And food service used to be the healthiest account we had on, on books, on our books. And they just, were frugal. They just did a great job. They served great meals, had a great participation, and they still do that. However, there are federal guidelines, believe it or not, that says you can't have contingency over a certain percent. So they've been forced to spend some of that money. Now fortunately, it was a good timing for us because, for example, we spent those, taking the fryers out of the, of the cafeterias and put in the other type of ovens that bake food and things of that nature to make it a healthier food. So it's all worked out well, but that contingency is no longer there. So we are their backup if, if something does happen there. We used to be able to count on them and take care of yourself, now they're under our umbrella. So with that being in mind. Just a few more things to mention to you about some concerns and I'll call them potential conditions. First of all, concerning the CERS, to be clear with this concern, it may be that we'll be required to, to make up everything, if you will, at one time. Or it could be that we make up monthly, we'll make up some of that. It'd be an amount per year simply divided by 12. We're not sure how all that's going to unfold. We do want to say this, as I, as a superintendent, I'm appreciative of what the legislators and the governor are attempting to do. And that is they're trying to rectify a pension system that needs some attention and they have, if you will, the fortitude to step up and, and take care of this. Now, it's going to be painful. It's going to be painful for all of us. So as I complain about the expense of this, I understand the necessity of it. I just hope, following two things, is that, one, it won't be all at once. It'll be a way that we can slow down the, the pain of the extreme expense all at once. And the second thing is that promises made will be promises capped. Folks entered into this profession back years ago and the idea was, your salary is never going to be sky high, but you have a great pension program. And those sick days that we give you in place of raises, you'll be able to count those. So I stand up for our employees that, that have saved their sick days and will be compensated for those and hopefully be included in their retirement. They're not, as one government person has said, that they're hoarding those days and trying to take advantage of the system and game it. I stand up for them. They're not doing that. They're doing exactly what they should be doing, is they're coming to school and they're working even when they don't feel well. They're staying in school with their students and teaching their students so someone is not taking their place that doesn't have the experience that they have. So I'm off the soapbox on that little deal and we'll move forward. Also, I mentioned to you about the cuts for the projected $200 million shortfall for the state. Do keep that in mind that that is a projected amount. It's very possible. You all know, your business people know as well as I do, that the economy can turn, it can flip, things can change. We're only three months into the new year, so to project that it's going to be a, typically things have been moving upward to the right, so hopefully, hopefully it won't be as bad as it does look. So we'll see how all of this unfolds. That could very well affect us this year. And then I mentioned to you about the 45% increase in workers' comp, also the, the 50% increase in the liability property insurance. So as you can see, there's a lot of uncertainty on both sides. There's a lot of uncertainty on the expense side, a lot of uncertainty on the revenue side. We're in a tough spot, but let me say this to you. Because of difficult decisions that you have made from the financial standpoint, this board has stepped up and has, has, has done some things other school districts haven't done in some financial decisions. You've been very solid in that area. Because of that, we're going to get through this. We're going to get through this. So I think this is the very best budget that I can present to you today. It's in line, it's, it's, everything you see there is, is telling it like it is. There are some unforeseen's that we'll deal with, we'll adapt and adjust when the time comes. So with that being said, if there's any discussion, I'll be glad to answer your questions. Otherwise, Mr. Chair, I would ask that you approve this budget as we presented it.
Okay. One comment, it might be relevant, might not be. The state legislators that are making these budgets, they should be held accountable and not, we should not have to suffer, education should not have to suffer budget cuts three months into the year. And every time there's a shortfall, it seems like they always come to education first and start trying to cut it to get the balance of budget. Well, they ought to have a balanced budget to begin with. If they're not doing it, which they don't do it every two years, they, something must be done.
Well, and I, I do, I appreciate your comments and I share your frustration. I will tell you though, that these, these cuts, this $200 million shortfall is across the board. It's not just education. So all departments have been hit with, with a certain percentage. Ours just happened to be 17%, but, so, they're not just, not just totally picking on us. I will tell you that. And I will tell you this, it's the two legislators who'll be here tonight, I think are, are true friends of education and they, they, they will definitely work for us. So.
Do I hear a motion to approve the fiscal 2018 working budget?
So I move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, second to the last thing, aye? If both are, is enough. Item number eight, approval preliminary agreement for our South City Schools Health Clinic Provider.
Board members, you do recall the conversation we had earlier in August that we, where we talked about, we had a very successful first year with our health clinic here on campus and shared with you some great things that we think improved attendance, improved test scores. We think things are definitely on the uptick and a lot of that can be attributed to being able to keep children at school during the day. We've had a very successful beginning with this health clinic. And so, in August, we discussed, we discussed the idea about opening this up to an RFP process and giving any healthcare provider in the area an opportunity to participate if they wanted to. So with your guidance, we created a, a selection committee, had a, actually I think, we'll talk a little more about that in just a moment. But we did create the selection committee and we created the RFP. We put that out, put it online and we asked those that were interested to participate. We advertised that well. The committee that we selected, they have made a decision. And they're here today, our chairperson of the committee is here to present to you information concerning the process and, and also the decision that they have made and the recommendations that they will make to you for approval of our health clinic provider. Mr. Bulley?
Thank you very much. I'm just going to give a quick overview of the process, as Mr. Hosecall said, an RFP, which is a request for proposal. And all that is, is a set of guidelines that we put forth so that the providers that are interested in presenting or making a proposal to us know basically what we're looking for. interested in presenting or making a proposal to us know basically what we're looking for. It's a set of guidelines. We posted that RFP on our website. We also use local media outlets, including advertising in the Kentucky Standard, three, three consecutive publications. The providers then could do an intent form online and fill that out, and they, and we allowed them to choose, there was a window, of course, for the presentation, but they could choose their first and second choice. And then once we had the intent form, we contacted them and set up an agreeable time to present and got the committee together. Just real quickly, the makeup of the committee. There was an admin member, which is myself. There was a board member, which Ms. Cruseberry served as. We had a community member, which was a representative from the Health Department. We also had a teacher representative and our school nurse, this Felicia Flanagan. We did follow open meeting protocols, and we did have media at all of our meetings. Our charge was to simply listen to the proposals, compare that to the RFP, and then make a recommendation as to who would be the best fit to continue as our, our district healthcare provider for our school health clinic. And what we had was, we had two really strong providers. We had Bardstown Pediatrics, and then we also had Physicians to Children. They both made a really strong presentation to our committee. It really made our, our decision difficult. There was discussion and, and really they were, it was a good position to be in because we had two really strong providers. After careful consideration and deliberation, we did make a decision, and our recommendation is that Physicians to Children be our healthcare provider for our school health clinic moving forward. I do want to thank, just on behalf of all the committee members, thank you all for allowing us to be involved in this process. Thank you. Is there any questions or anything regarding the process?
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept our San Francisco Health Clinic selection committee's recommendation to improve, to approve Physicians to Children as our health clinic provider?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, sitting by to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Thank you, Mr. Bowley. Item number nine, approval of the Custom Solutions Incorporated lease agreement for tax collection hardware.
Right, and that is mine, and I will go over quickly with you. We entered into agreement with this company three years ago, July of 2014, so we're at the end of our three-year lease. They provide us with all the hardware, computers, and all the information, all the instruments that we need for our tax collection. They also provide us with all of the software that generates programs and our internet access. We have been extremely pleased with their customer service and with their product. As you know, just check today, we're at 99% collection of our taxes for this year, which is just unbelievable. They maintain the database at all times for us, our list, they do the mailings for us. This company even, we had a 10, a 5K not too long ago, and they did the mailing for that for us because they maintain our database of all of our tax recipients. So we have been very pleased with it. The one thing we're getting to get, if we approve this new lease, we'll be getting all new hardware and no additional cost. The cost that we paid three years ago will be the exact same cost we'll pay for the next three years monthly. So we're very pleased about that, that there was no increase. But I would submit to you all that, that we should enter into this, this agreement. It's been a win-win for us, and our tax collection people just are tickled to death with the product.
Every time we talk about tax collection, we talk about the possibility of using credit card to pay it, but are, but there would be an additional charge for the...
Yeah, and, and we never have been able to, to work that all the way out, Mr. Bowley, yet. We're still looking at it all the time, but we, we never have been able to, to do it and go off. But other than that, we're all hundred percent ready to go.
Thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve CSI lease agreement for tax collection hardware?
I make a motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, sitting by to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Item number 10, approval first reading board policy update.
Now, we typically don't do this, we don't usually do it at the beginning of the year, but with our new, the process that we went through with the health clinic, we wanted to make sure that we update our policies to reflect those changes with the health clinic process. And so we have five board policies that needed a little bit tweaking. This is going to be the first reading. The 5.3 was community use of school facilities, has some guidelines that go through there, and the health clinic, basically what this says is the outside health clinic will be an exception to the normal policy of community use of the school facilities. And the reason it's out of there is because it's all going to be over in 9.21 is where the information is going to be. Same thing with 5.3 with rental application and contract, that has been moved over to And on, in 9.21, it, it separates the outside health clinic from the nurses. And it makes sure in that policy that it's in addition to our normal nursing service. It's not a replacement of, that's one thing it does. The second thing it does is that there will be a written agreement between the district and the healthcare clinic provider, and also that the visitor policy that they will abide by, which is 10.5, and all these are just small technicalities, but it kind of ties up the health clinic being part of our, our school system. Also supervision of students, this is 9.221, and basically all it does is if a student is on the main campus for use of the health clinic, for example, if there was a school out at, a primary school, early childhood, if any of those kids come onto campus, it just allows for that, being on a different campus, is all that one does. And then the last one, 9.2241, it authorizes the health clinic to dispense medicine, just like the nurse does. So those are the five policies that we need to tweak a little bit. This will be our first reading. I invite you to take a look at them over the next month. If there's any concerns you have with them, anything you need me to work on changing, I'll be glad to do that before we get to the second reading. Okay?
Thanks.
Can you bring that quicker over please before you...
Item approval of first reading board policies update.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, sitting by to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Item 11, preliminary approval softball complex.
We're going to take a look at this on the screen, give you some idea, just backtrack just a little bit. Our facilities here at Bardstown City Schools, we've been able to do an excellent job with them. This softball facility has been lagging a bit behind. Part of the problem is the landlocked situation that we have. You know, we talked about some other locations. We do have a very up-to-date, modern set of lights that are currently there, they're already installed. And with that in mind, it, it made most sense for us to use this same facility. So let me point out to you some things that are happening. There are two electrical boxes right here that were installed for the lights. The lights are on the perimeter of the property out here, not in the back, but that box has been, been a thorn for us. What we, originally home plate is sitting right there. We're able to move home plate approximately 25 feet forward. That will give us room. These three sets of bleachers you see here probably will not be like that. What we'll request is that it be one large set with wings on it to make a true filling for a, a real softball stadium. What we'd like to do is be able to minimize the cost in this, in this project, but yet it still be the absolute model of the region. These parents, these students, these coaches, they deserve a place to play that's equal to everyone else in the county, so we're going to be able to provide that with this project. The architects have, and the folks that were just here, Justin and Ken, were able, originally this line, I'm probably a little bit off here, but that was probably the foul pole somewhere along in there, they've been able to move this to this, this side, the entire thing, just enough to where we'll be able to keep those boxes right where they are and not have to go to the expense of moving them, and that's pretty major. So then what you see is, you see a facility that has an actual gate. The outside would be screened for the entire stadium. This will be a warning track all the way around, and then over here would be an entry point. As you well know, right now, if you come to a softball game, for certain games, we're able to put up a string, if you will, and ask you to walk inside of that and pay so we can charge admission. We do have a, a facility for concessions here that would actually work for us right now. We'll probably do some, keep that building there, but do some upgrade on it. These dugouts would all be new. Currently, the dugouts are right along in here, which is not a good location for, this field has been here for as long as Mr. Downs can remember. If that tells you anything...
Wow!
So, so we're hoping to be able to give these girls a facility that they, they would be proud of, you would be proud of, our community would be proud of. So here's, here's what I'm asking you. We're wanting to try to get this project underway. We're looking at some folks that can help us with some in-kind donations with construction, large equipment, things that can, can take down existing dugouts and things like that, which we're allowed to do. Now, to build it back, we're going to need what? I'm going to test it here. We're going to need a BG-1. And so we're underway of filing an electronic BG-1, but we needed to talk to you about that. So here's what I'm asking you for a motion. We want to go ahead and be able to start removing the existing chain link that's here and go ahead and look at the possibility of these existing dugouts that are located in this area, of getting those moved out. It's okay to do that, you just can't build back. The idea is that an architect and engineer looks it over and puts their stamp on it that this is a safe facilities for students to inhabit. That, that's basically what it comes down to. It's a really good idea. So all we're doing is the demolition piece of it. So your motion would be to give us permission to file an electronic BG-1, and secondly, to go ahead and begin the demolition process. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have right now about this. Funding for this, it would be in our capital outlay funds and unused bonding funds. So it's, it's money that we really can't get to any other way. With special permission, which we've not been given that opportunity yet to move it to general fund, we might, could have done that, but that's the only other place it could be used.
Do I hear a motion to file BG-1 and demolition, demolition...
Permission for demolition.
Permission for demolition of, of the current facility.
Make motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Demolition is the destruction of the, right now of the...
Fence and dugouts.
Fence and dugouts.
Pretty much. So we have, we're fortunate to have, Mr. Hood is a baseball softball connoisseur. I mean, he knows a lot about these kind of things. He said, he really does have a lot of experience in them. One of the things we learned in moving this is this fence, because of this, these boxes will be just a little bit on the short side. I'm, I'm going to throw this number out around 195, it should be around 225. The architects and Mr. Hood have been able to figure out that an eight-foot fence makes this a 225-foot distance now because of the height. So it'll be, it'll be a showcase, not only for the district, but also for the region.
Have a motion?
I have a second.
Second? All those in favor, sitting by to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none.
Thank you.
I'm real excited about it because when you drive by and you just see those people kind of standing, it'll be, make it so much nicer and safer with the fence in and everything.
Oh, yes, yes. It'll be wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, thank you all.
Item 12, approval of school-wide fundraiser, primary school-related arts.
This is one of those things the board policy says, if you have a school-wide fundraiser and a red book, best practice says the board will approve a school-wide, so that's why this comes to you. It's the selling of mums, and in your document, you'll see related arts teachers for special programs and supplies. I went ahead and took that an extra step and found out what exactly do you mean? They have what's called the puppeteers that will come and do a program for their students. The entire building can benefit from that, and also they have a folk dance that they use in the related arts class that, where a person comes and spends time with them. So that's, that's what they're going to use the funding for.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, sitting by to say aye?
Need a motion approval?
Second?
Need a motion?
Motion, and what did I say?
You approve? I make approval, or motion approved?
Second.
What time is it?
One thirty.
Okay. Motion? Do I hear a motion? And a second?
And a second.
Okay. All those in favor, sitting by to say aye?
I wanted to say mums the word.
Jennifer.
Any meeting last for more than 45 minutes?
That's right.
Totally something now.
Okay. Item 13, approval certified evaluation appeals panel appointment.
Just a reminder to the board, is we do this every year as part of the appeals process, if a person wanted to appeal their evaluation, we have a member that comes on and they serve a two-year term. Right now, Lauren Montgomery is in the second year of her two years, and Mr. Ken Hardman is, will be taking, will be coming on to the panel. We just need your approval for his appointment.
Do I hear approval for Ken Hardman to become a certified evaluation appeals panel member?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, sitting by to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Item 14, approval energy, emergency certification.
There are just a little unusual circumstance this year. We had our Spanish teacher left very late in the year, right, right at the end of July. We had to do a little scrambling to try to find another Spanish teacher. We, we advertised, we only had one applicant for the, for the job, and she has been teaching Spanish for three years under alternate certification, and she was going to finish up her whole program this summer with a class and thought it was going to be done in July, ended up not going to be done until the end of September. And so we're going to need to apply for an emergency certificate for her. She will have all her certification at the end of September, but her grades won't go into the status board until Christmas, so we need an emergency certificate to get her to Christmas. A very good teacher, just got kind of caught in a paper trail that got a little bit behind.
Do I hear a motion to approve the emergency certification certificate for Spanish teacher?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, sitting by to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Approval travel authorization.
Got two of these for you. Everything seems to be in excellent order here. The first one's an overnight trip, Y Club, will be traveling, trip date will be in November, the 19th through the 21st. Again, the reason it comes to you, it's an overnight trip. They do have the proper number of chaperones, a 15 to 1 ratio, both a male and a female. Over on the next request is the music department. This will be our entire band orchestra and our choir group. They will be making a trip on April the 8th through the 13th. They are presenting you with the trifecta, out-of-state, overnight, and commercial travel. They do plan on using a charter bus. In your packet, I've got a clarification on the number of, on the chaperone. There will be a ratio of 1 to 10, one adult per every 10 students, both male and female, and that's not on your packet, but I did have that for you. Everything's, seems to be in good order for both of those. Would like to ask that you approve those.
Are they taking a bus?
They'll take a charter bus for the second one. First one is, they will, they will travel, let's see, hang on one second here. Yes, they will, they will be traveling with the bus. There are 45 students going, yes, yes.
Okay, nice. It's every kind of the provider we're using for the bus, they are... Okay, nice, it's every time that the provider we're using for the bus, they are certified, safety and the whole...
Yes, they will go through a rigorous questioning through Mr. Hood. He will make sure that they are definitely...
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve two travel authorizations?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, saying about saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, there is none. Item 16, approval leave of absence request.
We have two of these for you. One's a normal maternity request. Everything's in good order there with the FMLA request, Jessica Downs. We also have Tracy Tackett. This is something that's a little unusual for us. We just don't have these come before us very often, but you have a medical disability that you're being asked to approve. I put at your place there a document, it's board policy. The truth of the matter is, when they provide these to you, it says that you shall grant permission if they give it to you in writing. So, that's what we have here. This person will be out for the remainder of this school year on this disability leave. So, we'd ask for your approval on those two items.
Do I hear a motion to approve leave of absence request?
Make motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, saying about saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, and your site-based minutes are included, and I'd like to take this opportunity to commend Superintendent Holt's law for continuing to upgrade our school systems, facilities. The high schools opened in 1957, I was the first group to go all the way through, and the improvements we're making, it's telling our community that we're making a commitment to our students, not only athletic-wise, but to educational-wise, with the new buildings, new facilities, upgraded facilities, and it's all been the responsibility primarily of the recent upgrades to Superintendent Holt's law.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I make motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Still as thunder.
This is one great word. End this meeting at 25 to 2. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, saying about saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, there is none. We're out.
Thank you all.